Why don't we get started in just a minute?
Okay, thanks everybody for coming to the Waitsfield Town Meeting. We're gonna start the meeting as with tradition. Darryl Forrest is gonna lead the group in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Everybody please, everybody please stand. Hats removed. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Darryl. I'm Brian Shoup. I was elected moderator last year, so I'll call the meeting to order. And the first order of business is Article One, to elect a moderator for the ensuing year. Are there any nominations?
Nominate Brian Shoup, second.
Uh, Brian Shoup been nominated for moderator, or are there any other nominations? More fun than it looks. Hearing none, all those in favor of electing Brian Shoup as Town Moderator say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. I appear to have a thanks. Um, so I've got a bit of a cold today, a little bit foggy. And I see a lot of familiar faces, so I'm not gonna go through in a lot of detail how I'm gonna conduct town meeting as I have in past years, if that's okay. As I've said, as I've explained before, and as we've conducted it before, I stick pretty closely to Robert's Rules of Orders and state law. The town meetings are conducted in accordance with Robert's Rules. We can amend them by, from time to times, if I ever say, unless there's any objection, we're gonna do something a little bit differently. That means we're gonna suspend the rules and do something differently. An example of that is letting a non-registered voter address the assembly. That's kind of a Robert Rules thing that you'll see me do. State law does supersede Robert's Rules, and one of the most important aspects of that is that you can't vote on something that's not been warned today. So if you can't amend a motion to buy a tow tr- a snowplow and say, "I'm gonna buy a fire truck instead," you can't do that. You have to only stick to what was on the warning, because that's the way that we give notice to voters what business is gonna be conducted today. I'll ask you all to please ask to be recognized to speak on an item, and if you can, please come up to the microphone so other folks can hear you. If you're not able to get to the microphone, I think you can try to arrange for somebody to bring a microphone to you. As I've, as you've seen in the past, the way that we conduct the business is I will read the article warning, we're gonna motion to adopt it, get a second, I'll read it back to you, then we can discuss it, and then we'll read it once more and vote. Are there any, I guess I'll, before, since I've done a very brief summary of the way that we do it unlike in past years, are there any questions from anybody about how we're gonna conduct town meeting? Great. So the first item of business is not necessarily an item of business. It's, um, it's not something that we act upon, but it's to hear and review the reports of town committees. So, the first item in the town report, which hopefully everybody has, I wanna call your attention to, is the dedication on page one, where this year, the town report is dedicated to Gordy Irish and Paul Hartshorn, who have a combined 120-plus years of service on the Waitsfield Basin Volunteer Fire Department. I think that's probably worthy of thanks and an applause from Robert. They must have joined back when they accepted five-year-olds. So I wanna, I wanna go through the town reports. It's an opportunity for the town to ask any questions about the written reports that were provided. Hopefully, we have folks from the different committees who are here. I'll first call your attention to the Cemetery Commission Report on page 52. I'm, I'm not sure if there's any cemetery, I saw Bob Cook, you know, Paul Hartshorn's on the Cemetery Commission, I believe. Are there any questions for the Cemetery Commission? Seeing none, we'll go on to the Planning Commission Report on page 54. I saw the Chair, Chris Cook, in the back. Are there any questions for the Planning Commission, or anything to add, Chris? Okay, then we'll move on to the Development Review Board Report. I'm sorry, Chris is the Chair of the Development Review Board, not the Planning Commission. I serve on the board, but they're... So, the develop, the, um, I guess Duncan Bryan's the Chair of the Planning Commission now. I don't see Duncan here today. There are no questions for that. Any questions for the Development Review Board?
Brian, I would like to, um, let me know if we could use some more members.
So, the folks sitting here, Chris, uh, she put out an appeal for folks that we could use some new members. We might be losing a member in, coming up as well. So Development, Development Review Board meets twice a month, every other Tuesday, administers the zoning and subdivision regulations for the town, reviews development proposals. So I would encourage anybody who's interested in that to contact Trevor and let the Select Board know of your interest. The Road Department Report is on page 56. Charlie Goodman's Road Commissioner's here. Charlie, do you have anything to add?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So as you know, our road department's run by three guys. And as, as they continue to meet the challenges and the new demands of running a road department, summer and winter, I've found that our crew, they attend meetings, they keep themselves informed, up to date. And with just the three guys, I feel that they've done a pretty good job of both summer and winter maintenance. Of course, winter is all affected by Mother Nature, and she's been pretty tough on us this year. So, but, uh, anything else in that, if you had some questions for us about the road department, I probably can help you with that?
I guess I...
Okay.
First of all, the roads are really, we have really... Oh, sorry, Michael, can you come up to the microphone and state your name, please?
My name is Michael Sharkey, and I just wanna say that the roads have been terrific this year with all the hard work that it's taken. But is the road, does the road commissioner have anything to do with the sidewalks? Is that, is this proper time to bring up the sidewalks?
Why don't you wait until the Select Board Report? Because the sidewalks, I believe, are under the...
Something else.
...per view of the, of the Select Board. So on page 58 is the Fire Department Report. Not sure if I saw Adam Cook, the Fire Chief. Certainly Paul and Gordy are here, as is other firefighters. Are there any questions or comments for the Fire Department? Seeing none, the Conservation Report is on page 62. I know the Chair, Phil Huffman, is not here. I, Jocelyn, Leah Lefery are on, are here from the Conservation Commissioner. Are there any questions about the Conservation Commission Report? Great, before getting to the Select Board Report, I, there's other reports in here from Metro Valley Planning District, the Recreation District, a lot of the service organizations. We typically don't go one by one through those. I did have a request, though, from, uh, the ambulance service to say a couple of words. Howie?
Good morning, all.
Good morning.
I'm Howie McBruson, I'm one of the neighbors, I live down the street, the side of the church.
Use the microphone.
Does this work?
Yeah.
Sorry. You guys have in your books a letter from our President, Richard Lord, talking about the Metro Valley Ambulance Service. I just wanted to be here today to reinforce his message, given the recent struggles being experienced all across the state by Vermont EMS providers. Two weeks ago, Waterbury Ambulance, our sister service, and the people who come to assist us when we need extra help, announced that they're going to their town meeting today to ask for almost $40,000 to be appropriated. We're not here asking for anything today. This also comes on news that you may have seen in, in the papers or heard on the radio, that two volunteer ambulance services up in the Northeast Kingdom, Derby Line and Barton, are closing their doors, presenting a challenge to those communities to how they're gonna continue to provide emergency services. EMS providers across the state, actually across rural America in general, are suffering from a shortage of volunteers and reduced reimbursement rates from Medicaid, from insurance companies and the like. So we're getting squeezed in lots of different areas. Mervis is one of the few all-volunteer, there's only a handful left of all-volunteer services in the state. We're all volunteers, we don't take any money for anything. We'll be celebrating our 50th anniversary of serving the communities of the valley next year. And we need your help. We get no financial assistance from any of the towns we serve, from the state of Vermont, or the federal government, except for the occasional grant that we might secure to purchase new equipment. Our volunteers last year gave more than 27,000 hours of their time responding to 500 emergency calls in the valley. We average about 500 calls per year where people get up from their suppers or get out of their beds in the middle of the night to come help their neighbors. Replacing all of that with a paid service would be hideously expensive, probably costing a million dollars a year to operate a paid service with enough staff to, to do what our volunteers do. As I say, we receive no money from the towns. We fund ourselves out of reimbursement from insurance and, and Medicaid, and the generosity of donors. Over the past 10 years, our donors throughout the valley, some of whom, some of you may be sitting here, have given us close to half a million dollars to replace our capital equipment, including nearly $300,000 that we spent in 2017 for a new ambulance. We're not coming here today to ask for any money. We just wanted you to know that we exist, and that for us to continue our mission, we need your help, both as continued donors, and we're very grateful for your generosity, and as volunteers. We run by virtue of people in the community stepping up to help other people. Please, spread the word to your neighbors. Anybody that would like to find a, a deeply rewarding and gratifying way to communicate, contribute, and support our community, we need your help so that you can be there for the next 50 years. And thank you for your time. I'd be happy to answer any questions about our service and our role in the community.
Coral.
Hi.
Coral, I'm sorry, can you come up to folks here?
I know you. If I can do it, you can do it.
I just want, on behalf of Mervis and all Emergency Services and Vermont, or Waitsfield Emergency Management, too many hats, just wanna remind everybody to make sure you've got your E-911 number visible from both sides of your driveway, so people can find ya.
How do we get a number?
Call the town office, and then we'll talk to your zoning person, who's your E-911 coordinator.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yes, sir.
How come you're not receiving any funding from the towns?
So, the, uh, Nicholas Harmon asked, why aren't we receiving money from the town?
Coral, the towns of the...
Towns, sorry.
Mervis, when it was founded, was, our original intent, well, I wasn't here then, but the original intent of our founders was for us to be a self-funding autonomous organization. And happily, we have been able to manage that way for, coming up on 50 years. So, at the moment, we're trying to continue to be a self-funded autonomous organization, providing service to the communities, and relying on, rather than coerced contributions, voluntary contributions from our donors. Hopefully, we can continue in this mode. And again, as I say, I'm very deeply grateful for the generosity of everyone who has helped and continues to help us.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I did, um, I did skip over two other reports that we typically acknowledge. One, on page 90 is the Jocelyn Memorial Library Report. I, I see Gene Jocelyn, Liz Lefery, or other trustees here. Is there any questions or comments, either for the library commission or from them?
Opening soon.
All right, Gene Jocelyn says it's opening soon. It's been a big capital project this year. I'm sure folks are looking forward to seeing it. And then finally, one, or not finally, but we'll get to the Select Board Report soon. But on page, um, 60 is the Water Commission Report. And Darryl Forrest, who's on the Water Commission, had asked to say a couple of words about the water system.
As I look around the room, I see a few water customers out there, so none of this is new to you, but let me bring everybody else up to date. We had a couple of pretty good events this year. One was the reduction of rate, an 18% deduction of rate. And this is actually the second reduction of rate that we had. In the very beginning, or maybe five years ago, six years ago, three years ago, I guess it was, we reduced the rates, but this was a pretty significant reduction of 18%. And we appreciate everybody that's involved with that. We also passed the new water ordinance. We revised it and passed one this summer, which went into effect in January. Our main author of that was Robin Morris, who did all the research and just did one heck of a job putting that together. And then that was reviewed by two lawyers, one, one for the Water Commission, one for the Select Board. So it's a document that's available at the town office, and I believe it's online, too, isn't it, Trevor? Yeah, so it's online if you wanna look at it. Not many changes made. We just realized after five years that we needed to sew up some of the things that were kinda loose ends, and, and we did that. We did, this summer, we did a leak testing, and we did find some leaks, mainly around fire hydrants, but in other areas, we were in pretty good shape. So the system, as new as it is, doesn't have a lot of leaks in it. One other thing, we flush hydrants in September. And that's the only time this year that we added any chlorine. The water is so pure that we don't ever have to add chlorine in the summertime. If you remember, a few years ago, we had to do that when it was a hot summer, and we didn't have enough movement through the tank, so we had some problems. But the only time we're doing that now is when we flush in September. So just kinda be aware of that. And probably most of the water users didn't even know that was going on as far as the chlorine, because not much is put in, and it's, it's just not a factor. But that, just be aware of that, that there's no chlorine or other additives in our system, except in September. Uh, I do wanna address the, this happened in, in 19, so that was kind of an 18 report. We did have a frozen hydrant at the time of the Bear Fire. That was probably leaking from September, and we didn't know it. So it's a self-draining type hydrant, and no problems until it freezes. And then the whole thing freezes, and that's why that hydrant was, was frozen. We had our operator within the last couple of weeks go out and dry test all the other fire hydrants, and we found two other fire hydrants that were frozen, and they've since been unfrozen and are being repaired as we go. It was at the top of Trentley Road, and then the, the next one down from that was across from Verdmont. So those were, those were frozen, but they're now thawed. And we have a procedure that we will follow, that after every time a fire hydrant is used, 30 days later, we'll go back and make sure that it's not leaking. And we have two types of fire hydrants. One is, one is self-draining, and those are the ones that usually give us the problems. And the other ones then have to be pumped out. And Paul's familiar with that, because the Fire Department, when they use a fire hydrant, have to pump those, what's left in the fire hydrant has to be pumped out. We, we have a retiring member of our commission, who's been on the commission for six years, and I don't see Jack here. Are you here, Jack? I don't think so. Jack Himmelsbach has been on that commission for six years, and he's gonna retire. His last meeting was in February. We thank him for his service. He was very diligent, rarely missed a meeting, and really helped us through six years of the Water Commission. So we have an opening, and certainly like to encourage a user to come on the commission. Those are always helpful for whatever we do. So we'll take, anybody, any resident can come on to the commission. So there is an opening. Just call Trevor, give me a call, or give one of the other members a call. So that's it. Do you have any questions? Be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thanks, Darryl. And then finally, on page 10 is the Select Board Report. I guess, Michael Sharkey, unless it's a budget question, that would be an appropriate time to talk about sidewalks or ask a question about sidewalks?
Well, it relates to money.
Then why don't we wait until the budget, if it's a budgetary item? Any questions for the Select Board, or comments about their report? Hearing none, this is always an awkward time of town meeting for me, because there's, we're not taking any action, but we do have, have historically asked for a motion to kind of accept or acknowledge that we've reviewed the reports of the town offices. Is there a motion to that?
So moved.
Moved, is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, no. Great. So we'll move into the articles that we will be taking action on, beginning with Article Three. Shall the voters approve a budget of $1,936,058 to pay the operating expenses and indebtedness of the town? If approved, an estimated $1,581,725 will be raised from property taxes. We have a motion to this article? Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. So we'll put this to the, up on the floor for debate. Again, Article Three, shall the voters approve a budget of $1,936,058 to pay the operating expenses and indebtedness of the town? If approved, an estimated $1,581,725 will be raised from property taxes. So I've been asked, if, there's no objection, if we turn the floor over to Trevor Lashway, the town administrator, to provide a brief, and I've been told it's very brief, presentation to the town. Go ahead, Trevor. Hearing no objections.
So for the first trick, we're gonna make members of the board disappear. The floor is perfectly safe. We'll make them breathe here in a minute. I'm just gonna turn this on. It is brief, we have 10 slides total, that includes the...
The cover slide and a question slide, so this shouldn't take terribly long. Takes this a second to fire up.
Trevor, you could take that microphone off that stand if you want.
That a little bit easier for, I, I wanna note, we're going, we're live, right? So, so language, for some of us, is an important thing to remember. So, while this is firing up, maybe I'll just go into what would be the, the first slide, since it's mostly text. And we'll get there in a second, anyway. The proposed fiscal year '20 budget is, as Brian read, $1,936,058. That's a 2.8% increase from fiscal '19. That fits in with some of the fairly common rates of inflation, both when you looked at, we looked at CPI and another inflationary measure tied to, more tuned for state and local government inflation. So it's heavy on the personnel costs, which is such a big part of what we do. So here's that quick fact slide. All right, mood lighting. So if this is approved today, what we're estimating is a 1.2 cent per $100 of assessed value increase in the tax rate, that's about 2.9%. So again, in that inflationary range. This is less than it has been in years past, where it's averaged closer to a little, well, it's been a little more than 5% on average. So between $200,000 and $400,000 of assessed value, the annual impact is $24 to $48 for the year. So an estimated $2 to $4 a month. There's no new debt in the fiscal '20 budget. For the first time in five years, since Sullivan Powers has been doing our audit, we had an audit with no findings and deficiencies in internal control. Thanks, Sandy Gallup, she did a lot of the hard work and heavy lifting. And the budget focuses on the basic principles of fiscal stability. It is basically a level service proposal. There's not much that's new in there. So the process started in September with the board setting its goals and priorities, and I won't read them to you, but I will summarize them quickly. There were four. The first one is to be mindful of the tax rate impact, and to try to keep it somewhere in the range of what's been an average increase or less in the past few years. Number two is to combine support for the longer-term goals of fiscal, financial sustainability and resiliency. So this ties into a lot of the policy work that we've done over the last year, with our debt service policy, fund balance policy, and investment policy. So we've really tried to shore up these policies, because they're the, the frame around which we can build our budgets and implement them safely and effectively. Number three is to work to provide municipal services in a manner that's efficient, effective, responsive, responsible. This will be, if the budget's approved, it's on us on the implementation end, to make sure that works. And then the fourth is to identify any of the short and long-term investments, particularly in infrastructure or equip. Maybe we'll go to the, ending the questions, if that's okay? Yeah. I promise, it won't take long, and it's gonna get real visual here for a second. So just in terms of where the money's proposed to be spent, you can see through the different categories. You have a copy of this pie chart in the annual report as well. The general government category is where we combine town office operations, planning and zoning, the Select Board budget, a few other things. So our largest single expense category is usually the road department, which makes sense, based on our structure and size, but you can see it's spread around. Just to note, we'll talk about debt service a little bit later on. You'll see it says 14% right there. That's our standalone debt service. There's another chunk of it in the capital portion of this. So overall, it's about 22% of expenditures. So one out of every $5 is paying debt service in fiscal '20. And then this just shows you summary by category. I think, and I counted them up this morning, 15 of the 20 categories are at or less than the overall rate of increase in the budget. And then the bigger ones, like the road department, are largely due to materials. About $22,000 of that increases for road salt and winter sand. And that's where most of the pressure is in fiscal '20. And then the capital improvement programs, another big chunk of the budget. This is where we transfer money from the general fund into the capital area to, to do primarily two things. One of it's to transfer to reserves, so money we're saving for projects, equipment purchases, other capital needs. And then the other piece of it is tied to what are sort of direct expenditures. Debt service is the main one in the capital program in fiscal '20. But if we bought something outright with general fund dollars, it would be a direct expenditure. More than half of it is road-related. And then this capital budget there, we're proposing to do the Village West sidewalk in fiscal year '20. And so that's what is in some of the general reserves. And then in the road department budget, there is, we're just saving toward paving and paying down debt. And then the fire pumper truck is a big piece of the Fire Department debt reserves. And this is, we've talked, one of the policy goals that the board has set is to try to get its debt service to expenditure ratio within a range of 5% to 15%. Currently, we're at 22, so we're outside of that range. But what this shows is that if budgets just grow by a rate similar to the FY '20 budget, we eventually hit the top end of our target range in '21. It could be as low as the low end of the range by fiscal '28. This ties into the capital program as it's projected out through fiscal '24. So any debt that's out there, there's a greater purchase that's in fiscal '22, '23 area that we're probably not gonna be able to get there with solely reserve savings. That's in this modeling, but any other debt service wouldn't be. So if we did another bigger capital project, a highway garage, for example, that would obviously affect those ratios. And the idea is, as we, out of the general fund, as we get down into that range, what we're effectively able to do is create capacity for operational expenditures or for other capital expenditures, because we're not paying them, not using that money to just pay down debt. And then revenues, there are no real changes here, but it does... And then revenues, there are no real changes here, but it does highlight, we are very dependent on local property taxes. 82 percent of all the revenue comes from that particular source. And then at the school level, I mean, at the town level, our tax bill, when you get it, is about 80/20 in terms of 80 percent of it goes for educational purposes and the other 20 percent funds all of those municipal services. And then, as we mentioned in the quick facts, this is the projected impact on the property tax rate, giving you three categories of assessed value. I think our median assessed value is just north of $300,000. But we like to try to cover enough of the possibilities. And as I promised, it was quick. Hopefully, it was painless.
Before taking the questions, while we bring back the quick facts.
Yep, yeah, well, now we'll make the board reappear.
So the article before the town, the voters, is the budget. Are there any questions or comments? Ted Joslin?
For a number of years now, the Select Board has been asked, and they have funded or budgeted $10,000 annually to the restroom recreation and conservation fund. This past year, they did not include that amount in the budget. At town meeting, a motion was made and seconded, and the townspeople approved the fact that the budget should be increased by $10,000 to be allocated to the reserve fund. This year, it appeared that the Select Board had decided to include this $10,000 in the reserve fund, and it was so reported in the Valley Reporter. However, apparently, late in the budgeting process, this amount was deleted from the budget. Therefore, I would like to make a motion at this time to increase the town budget by $10,000 to be allocated to the restroom recreation and conservation fund.
So there's been a motion made to amend Article Three to read, shall the voters approve a budget of $1,946,058 to pay the operating expenses and indebtedness of the town? If approved, an estimated $1,591,725 will be raised from property taxes. I'm pretty sure my math is right. Is there a second to that motion? Several seconds. Leo LaFerrier, others. Would anybody like to speak to this motion?
If I might.
Go ahead, Ted.
I think it's very important to keep this funded on a level basis so that we have this reserve fund available to take up opportunities that arise for recreation or agricultural opportunities. A lot of these opportunities that come up are time-sensitive. There are short periods to be able to react to them. The fact that we have some of these reserve funds available to at least provide seed money and to at least give us a little bit of time to look further into these projects and to see about raising private funds, private grant money, or public grant money to get them completed. And this has been the case for a number of the projects that we have had where a vast majority of the money that has been used to fund these projects has not come from the town. It's, the seed money has been a very small part of the overall project. Historically, we've had a number of projects done. The Leroux Swimming Hole, which everybody thought that property was just owned by the town, was never owned by the town, that was purchased, and it is a public swimming hole. The Hartsoorn Farm Stand, that land down there was concerned, conserved with funds that we have here. The Gateway Town Forest property that we just completed up next to the other town forest land, 110 acres, was added to that project. But even more importantly, this has provided much better access to that property. It also included improvement to the town, to the Bowen Road, and to the construction of a nice parking lot. In addition, just recently, down at the Kingsbury Field, another time-sensitive project where that piece of property was going to be available or for this town to buy for soccer fields where it was going to be sold for other uses. The reserve fund, to the tune of around $31,000, was used with that and contributions from other towns to secure that piece of property for future use. So I think it's very important that we, that we keep that fund with a reasonable amount of money in it. With the two projects recently, the town forest and the recreation field, it has been, you know, considerably depleted. And I would also like to point out that these projects are supposed to go on their, their own hook, as it were. For instance, the town forest, we need to develop more trails and stuff up there, but we have had logging operations that has raised money so that we would have money to develop trails. We have also leased some of that property up there to Dave Gavitt for sugaring operations and have received income on those also. But those projects, those monies that come in are used to improve the existing property and to maintain it without asking for any more funds for the town. So hopefully, the townspeople will again see fit to approve this motion. Thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to speak to the item? John Jamison?
I just wanted to give a little kind of backstory to how we came to that decision. You know, we've got a very talented Conservation Commission. It's just loaded up with great minds and they do super work. You know, following the goals and priorities that were in the presentation, we really struggled again this year with the budget. There was a lot of work between Trevor and the Select Board and the Budget Committee, really doing our best to, to keep the tax rate as low as possible. There's always competing needs in the budget. This year in particular, we struggled with the fact that, I believe we have the only three-man road crew in the valley, and we have a pretty equal amount of road mileage of the other towns. And, you know, these guys, one of them will go on vacation in the summer and it'll leave two guys, and frankly, it presents an unsafe workplace in some degrees, you know, when it comes to flagging and other things, when they're doing roadwork. So we really would like to eventually get those guys some help. And we don't really know what that means, whether it's a full-time person or a part-time person. But this year, we came to the conclusion that what would help them the most was some subcontracted work. And, you know, we don't tell them how to do their job, they're going to figure out how they're going to use that best. But we decided on a $10,000 amount for subcontracted work, and we felt that we should keep the budget as conservative as possible. And looking at the Conservation Commission's funds, they currently have about $143,802 in funds that they control. Much of that is restricted funds, granted, but we felt, without being, you know, not in a punitive sense, but just feeling that there were needs that need to be met that were of higher priority, we took the $10,000 out of their allocation and put it toward the road crew. So that's, that's kind of how we got there. It certainly is not in any kind of disapproval of the work that the Conserva- Commission does. We very much appreciate their, their work.
Anybody else like to speak to the item? Leo LaFerrier, then Charlie Goodman, then Liza Walker.
I can appreciate what John is saying, like this. I leave it to Charlie to straighten me out once in a while. He's my good neighbor down the road. I can appreciate what John is saying about limiting expenditures. And granted, the Conservation Commission has, if you look at it, a pretty fair balance in its accounts. But these balances are for particularly designated purposes. They're not for land acquisition. And that's what's key. We have NTRUST, an NTRUST fund you see in the town report, which is private monies donated to the town for the particular purpose of improving the trail system at SCRAG. After the purchase of the Savan, excuse me, property, the 110 acres to go with SCRAG, there was balance, a balance left over from funds raised privately. And those funds are designated for trail maintenance and expansion on SCRAG. So we don't have access to those funds for purposes of land acquisition. That's the key. The Restroom Recreation and Conservation Fund has for years reliably, with the help of the Select Board in different times, to, to sustain a kitty which we can tap, which the townspeople can tap, for purposes of land acquisition. Currently, the balance in that account is about $9,600, which is really very small considering that it can also be used for other purposes by the Select Board. The Conservation Commission does not have control over the Restroom Conservation Fund. So with all due respect to John and the good efforts, very good efforts of our Select Board, I would ask that you support Ted's amendment. Thank you.
Charlie, did you want to?
So I would support John's comments. One correction, though. We are a three-person road department year-round, whereas other towns around us have added a fourth person for the summer months. So Ted, I'm a little bit responsible probably for that $10,000. Because of the inability to have a full, successful, blown-out working season with, quite often with two guys, it's just, we're kind of getting behind on our things. So there's a project that we have this year that's, it's going to take around $10,000 worth of hired labor. In other words, we'll hire back home. We have the culvert, of course, we've got to buy stone too as well, and this is quite a little project, several culverts to be done. So in order to get this work done, there was no way that we're going to be able to do this on our own. So I went to the board and asked them for this $10,000 for this project. So that's, that's just to get this one little segment of work done. Otherwise, we're just still looking at our normal, going about our usual routine of work in the summer, which, you know, we're gaining. I'm sure you all noticed the work on the Commons Road this year, and we're going to finish that project to the far end of it this year. So my other concern is, is we continue doing our work, our funding from the state level is continuing to drop, and they ask us to do more. So we don't have those resources of getting money from various other places as this Conservation Commission has done in the past. So, and my big concern is, we continue at this, you know, you're going to have a hard, you're going to hike to get to your hiking trails. So I would like to support the Select Board on their decision to leave this out for this year.
Liza, and then, and Sal, did you want to be recognized?
Good morning. I'm Liza Walker. I'm a Waitsfield resident, and I'm also, for the last 15 years, I've been working in the Matterer Valley for the Vermont Land Trust as your Regional Director, and also, more recently, the Chair of the Matterer Valley Recreation District. So I humbly stand before you as somebody who has come, as someone who's come in partnership with the Conservation Commission and the Rec District to ask the town and the voters to provide money for many projects that we've done. As Leo so eloquently described in Ted before him, we've done a lot of work, and last year was kind of a really crazy one with three important projects that really put a boost in the valley's recreation resources, between the SCRAG Town Forest Project and the, and the rec fields, and then the Trail Sinage and Kiosk Project, which the Planning District is spearheading, and that's an effort to really make our recreational trails more findable so that we can get to them and our visitors can find them, and that can really, as studies have shown, really boost our economic development. So I just wanted to, you know, certainly recognize the value of the road crew's work. We never want to be pitted against that, but I think, just wanted to point out that the value, as one who helps to write the grants and goes before the funding boards, including the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board, which is our amazing state resource for conservation funding, and the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board has louted across the nation for its, you know, its forward thinking and its approach to conservation and affordable housing. And so we're really lucky to have state money to support conservation, but we really need to have local money as well. And it doesn't always have to be a lot, but it's really a sign of our intentions and of our values, and it helps us to, to get in the door. So to go and ask for state money and say that there's no town money available is really, really hard to make a compelling case. So with our money, and looking at my calculations, which are not perfect, I'm sure, about $146,000 of Recreation Conservation Reserve Fund has been used in the past since, I think, '95, and that's leveraged $1.7 million. And that's just in Waitsfield. It's bigger in the valley wide, and that's federal money, state money, and many, many private donations from people. So having the town in the game is so critically important when we're trying to do more work. And the, I guess, the Recreation Fund is one of the fifth oldest, there's about 52 Conservation Reserve Funds in the state, and the valley is one of the fifth oldest ones. So it just speaks to Waitsfield's leadership and history in this, in this realm, and I really hope that we can continue to show that forward thinking. Just lastly, I think we have, we've done a lot of work, but there's a lot more work to do in the coming years. We're really lucky that so many important pieces of land have been stewarded well by families, longtime families in the valley, but I think we know that farmers are among the oldest generation, you know, they're the, you know, they're aging in Vermont, and many pieces of land are going to be changing hands in the next five years, 10 years. And if we don't have some capacity to act when those opportunities happen, we'll be really losing critical biodiversity, critical farmland, and recreational opportunities. So thank you for supporting this.
Al Carr, would you like to speak?
I'm Al Carr, and with another person, I run the NTRUST Fund. We're a small environmental foundation, and we support a number of environmental organizations in Vermont and in Maine. We have supported the Conservation Commission over the years, especially primarily with the SCRAG Mountain Project. And when somebody comes to us asking for a grant, we like to see, what's the support? And we were really pleased to see, so many years, the town of Waitsfield, the people of Waitsfield would vote to support these, whatever they are, the, you know, park and rec and whatnot. So I think it's important that we continue to support, through this $10,000 amount, these organizations. organizations. At least it's important to NTRUST to see that kind of support. Thanks.
Sal?
I appreciate all those comments, Ted and Liza, people we've worked with for a long time. I just have a couple of comments to add. In the interest of full disclosure, just so you know exactly where this is, from town meeting to town meeting, two years ago, town meeting, we had asked the voters to approve a budget that did not include this $10,000. On a floor vote, it was returned. Last year, the exact same thing happened. We sought to eliminate the $10,000 to this fund, and by floor vote, it was returned. So that's my full disclosure. We will obviously live by the vote of the people in this room here again this year. One of the things I wanted to bear down on a bit, eliminate this mystery if there is any, there is no separation or hostility between the Select Board and the Conservation Commission. They are a great organization. They work hard. They have good projects. They present their projects well. One of the things I love most about them is that they're very good about letting the Select Board know well in advance what it is they're working on so that we can begin to become invested in it, understand, ask our questions, form our questions. They are, I think, if you ask them member by member, they would say they have a good working relationship with the Select Board. That's certainly my point of view. So I don't want anyone to think that this attempt to eliminate $10,000 from this, but this item, which is a fund that they have access to, it's not a Conservation Commission fund, but they have access to this money, is designed solely to meet some of the austerity goals that we have implemented over the last couple of years with respect to the budget. We are looking in every corner to try to eliminate funds from the budget in order to keep the tax rate down. That's what this is about. And finally, I don't know how far to go with this, but I don't know, this is not, there's never been any discussion that this is going to be a permanent elimination from the budget. That has never been discussed, and I doubt that it ever will be. My guess, and my own position, is that this is a one-year reduction of $10,000. I don't, it's hard to imagine what the discussion will be in next year's budget round, but I would be very surprised if we ask for the same reduction next year. This is a one-year request, as I see it. I can't speak for the entire board on that point. And as Charlie pointed out, my last point here, even though the discussion about putting on a fourth member of the road crew for the summer was not, is not a discussion that occurred at the same time as the reduction of the $10,000 from this fund, we did coincidentally find a home for that $10,000 in the form of some additional summer help this year. So thank you.
Any other comments? Kurt Lindberg?
Good morning, everyone. I'm a, my wife and I are kind of new residents in Waitsfield. We moved in last year. Kurt, can you turn your microphone for me? And I have a special interest in conservation, so I've attended some of the Conservation Commission meetings recently, and I've been incredibly impressed by the diligence and care of which they go about their work. In particular, they're doing a lot of planning now on that Gateway Project and trying to really understand that land and how to best preserve and steward it over the years. So I'd like to add one, I guess, point to the comments that have already been made. And Liza mentioned the value of biodiversity. Currently, the extinction rate of species across the globe is 1,000 times its normal rate. If that rate continues, we are going to lose the ability of this planet to be a habitable place for nature and for us. So I really applaud the efforts that the Conservation Commission in Waitsfield has led to preserve land for nature, and I hope that this modest request for $10,000 can be supported so the town has the ability to act on kind of future opportunities as they emerge.
Any other comments or questions? Michael Sharkey? And then Fred Messer?
I really support the conservation efforts, but I think that we should look at the income that it produces. Now, I use the SCRAG Mountain Trail quite a bit, and I'm a tourist on that trail. And the reputation that we get for have, you know, reasonably well-planned hiking trails brings a lot of money into this valley. There is no way probably to estimate how much money it brings in, but I'm sure it's way, way, way over $10,000. But if we don't have the money, could we have some kind of a compromise for at least one year?
Fred?
So Fred Messer asked to call the vote. That is not, that's not, we're not there yet. We're, so to call the vote is a non-debatable motion, but it requires two-thirds of the body to approve it. And what that does is it stops debate, goes to a vote. How we vote, then we'll figure that out when we get there. So is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It's been a second. So all those in favor of stopping debate and voting on the proposed amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. So we're not voting on the budget. We're voting on amending the article, and then we will vote on that, either the original article or the amended article, depending on how the vote goes. And that article, the proposed amendment, is to change Article III to read, "Shall the voters approve a budget of $1,946,058 to pay the operating expenses and indebtedness of the town? If approved, an estimated $1,591,725 will be raised." If approved, an estimated $1,591,725 will be raised from property taxes. And that will be, if you, if that is approved, we'll then vote on that budget unless there's further amendments. Paul, did you want to be recognized?
I want to request a paper ballot.
So under Vermont law, a paper ballot can be required as the method of voting if seven members, if seven voters agree to that. So I'd say, if anybody who wants a paper ballot, please raise their hand. So I'm seeing four people asking for a paper ballot. So that motion fails. We're going to go to a voice vote. And if it's too close to call, we'll do a division of the House and do a standing vote. So all those in favor of amendment Article III to read, "Shall the voters approve a budget of $1,946,058 to pay the operating expenses and indebtedness of the town? If approved, an estimated $1,591,725 will be raised from property taxes." All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. So now we've got the amended article is in front of the voters. Are there any comments or comments about that amended budget? Paul, did you like the floor?
You're ready to vote on the amended budget, is that right?
That's correct.
Well, I would like to make another amendment to that budget. I would like to add $25,000 to the paving reserve fund, seeing as how everybody wants to spend that kind of money. We have been very, very diligent in trying to keep our budgets and increasing our budgets down. We have been way behind in our paving schedule, and if people seem to want to spend that kind of money, it would seem that maybe we ought to add another $25,000 to that reserve, and I would make that motion.
Okay, the motion is meant to amend the budget by adding $25,000 for paving. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded. So hopefully, somebody's going to check my math. I do have a calculator. The motion is to amend the article to read, "Shall the voters approve a budget of $1,971,58 to pay the operating expenses and indebtedness of the town? If approved, an estimated $1,616,725 will be raised from property taxes." Any comments or questions about that proposed amendment? Nicholas Harmon and then Steve Scheick.
Thank you for bringing that, Paul. That sounds like a worthy expenditure. I wonder if you could just give a little more color or background about what the plans are in the future for those type of funds as well. Thank you.
Well, in the past, we've been pretty conservative, and we're way behind on keeping up with our paving resurfacing. This would move us along a little bit further on our roads. As you all know, the roads are as good as they could be expected in this time of year, but we're getting a lot of cracks and crevices that we need to fix, and we're just getting behind on it. And it seems that this group is in a spending mood, and it's a good time to, we've got to fix the roads if we're going to get to those trails to walk on them.
Steve?
So can you just clarify what's in the budget at the moment? Or can you clarify?
So the budget's 19 to 30. Maybe somebody can zero in on it? Trevor, can we get a microphone?
We do, we do.
So changing from 50 to 75.
Right, yeah. And that would be found in the, it's in the Road Department Reserves line on page 26, line 233, and it ties into the Capital Improvement Program Summary on page 32. Line one is paving reserves, so it'll go from 50,000 to 75,000 if approved.
Ted, Justin, did you want to talk? And John, do you want to go next?
I would just point out that we brought up the issue on this $10,000 because we thought it was going to be included, and we came to find out that the eleventh hour...
Oh, sorry. Oops here. Ted, I'm not hearing anything in the background.
We thought that this $10,000 for the reserve fund was going to be included this year, and then we found out, sort of at the 11th hour, that it wasn't going to be included. And that's why we brought it up, and we've explained why we think it's important. And we feel like we have a good working relationship with the Select Board, and the Select Board has to approve any expenditure of these funds, where they're going to be spent, how much they're going to be spent. But we feel it's important to keep this fund at a reasonable level. My point at this time is that if the Select Board had put so much time and effort in this budget, and this $25,000 was so important, why didn't you bring it up when you were presenting the budget today?
Would anyone like to respond to that?
We presented what we thought was a reasonable budget for the tax increase in the beginning, and now that people seem to think that we need more money for recreation and so on, it seems like the Select Board thinks that we ought to have a little more money for resurfacing our roads to maintain them. I think that's why it's, we did not put it in there before because we've been real conservative on this sort of thing. I think this board is all in agreement that we've worked hard to keep the tax rate from increasing dramatically. We wanted to have a fourth man on our crew. It turned out that that would be roughly an $80,000 increase, so we didn't do that this year. That was, seemed to be a rather serious increase. And now we feel that, you know, if we want to do it, we can add to our paving, which we should do.
Yes, want to come up front?
I have another point after this. Your paving reserve fund, and your roads are the most important thing in this town. In Warren, we experienced, as you know, I'm the town administrator, we in Warren experienced the same issue of not maintaining our roads. So we set in motion a plan of all our paved roads, what we're going to do, gravel and everything, and we had a real large hike in one year of our budget to get our roads back up to normal. In two years' time, all our roads are on a maintenance schedule regularly, and you don't have the large spike. I can tell you, when you do the East Warren Road, you will have an extreme expense there because you're going to have to rebuild that road. So I just wanted to touch, to let you know that $25,000 towards something that the town is needs, and the roads are your most important thing because you've got to get people here, you've got to get people out, you've got to get your emergency services here. I don't have an issue putting additional into reserves. I have another point and another question on the budget, though.
Okay, let's get through the amendment first and then talk about other items. John Jamison?
Just to catch everybody up or give you a picture of how we're looking at the roads and the paving schedule, on page 33 of your town report, near the top, it shows the schedule for pavement. We are planning a major rebuild of East Warren Road, and those of you that drive that frequently know that it could be done yesterday if things were the way they should be. But that road isn't planned to be resurfaced and rebuilt until fiscal year '22. So we've got to kind of limp through another few years here on that terrible road. And to remedy the deficit in reserve for that project and several others, we are thinking about adopting a situation like Warren did, where they had a kind of a special tax for just repaving that was stepped over a series of years. It would be 1%, then 2%, then 3%, and then 2%, then 1%. We've been putting that off because we're really trying to spread out the pain a little bit by paying down some of the debt service and then implementing this special pavement tax in the future. So this isn't just a kind of a surprise thing. We have a plan that we're going to, you know, put forth and hopefully get into the shape that Warren is on their roads. It's pretty evident when you cross the town line, and they bit the bullet and paid a little extra money, and they've really benefited from the road conditions in their town. And I think Charlie would support my point that when your roads are in better condition, you don't always have to use as much salt and sand, and your maintenance quality, your maintenance budget can stabilize as well. So that's just, I just wanted to give people an idea that this isn't just kind of out of the back of our head here. We're thinking about this problem pretty hard.
Anybody else like to speak to the item? Charlie Goodman?
I think maybe it would help to get an idea of what the cost of this kind of work is. The East Warren Road, which is three miles, we've estimated that at around three-quarters of a million dollars. We have very little money in that reserve. We have a long way to go yet. Adding $25,000 won't hurt us. Again, there's just not the resources that we used to get from the state for these projects, so we're really being left on our own. And that's not the only project that the Road Department needs. We are, a lot of things have been put off for, oh, about a dozen years, I would say, and it's catching up to us. So small support for $25,000 to add to your budget, it's not going to hurt your pocketbooks too bad. Between the two things, I think it might be about a penny with the Conservation Commission, so... Commission, so I would certainly like to see this go forward. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak on the motion? Yeah, up in the back, if you can come on down.
Hi, my name is Will Creewald. I'm a relatively new resident to the valley. I just moved to Waitsfield last year. I just wanted to kind of voice my support for increasing our reserves in times where we have economic stability. If you've kind of noticed, we have some items on here that relate to debt management, and the second goal, I believe, in the presentation was around reducing debt. And when you increase your reserves during good times, you avoid debt in the future. And as many of you may be reading in the paper, the cost of borrowing is increasing, excuse me, in the state. That's kinda all I had to say. Thanks.
Would anybody else like to speak to the motion to amend? Ready for the question? So again, we're not voting on the budget. We're voting on amending the article, which we will then further discuss and vote on if you'd like. The motion to amend Article III to read, "Shall the voters approve a budget of $1,971,058 to pay the operating expenses and indebtedness of the town? If approved, an estimated $1,616,725 will be raised from property taxes." All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. So now we have an amended Article III, amended for the second time. Are there any other comments or questions about the budget? Cindy Hartshorn?
Kick that mic down, Cindy.
First, I wanna thank the board and everyone who put a lot of effort in this budget. It was very detailed, very evident, and thank you very much. My question is on page 19. There's two questions to it. It is under the Board of Listers. My first question is, when is the town going to have its appraisal? Because I think, and I've seen, and I've talked with a lot of people, that the values across the town for land and houses, it is very inconsistent, which means that you're sending a lot of money to the state when you don't have to. So I wanna know when the town appraisal is going to happen, so the properties in this town are appraised fairly. And two, in that line of a 43% increase, I'd like to know, is that a salary increase? Is that a contract? Do... I know our listers are volunteers, and my experience with the listers, they have been very active, which is great. But on the assessor's side, I'd like to know if that's a contract or if they're a salaried position, and why the increase.
Who'd like to take that one?
Part of that increase is for some of the mapping that we're doing, that the listers are doing prior to the... Prior to the... What do we call it? We have through the RFP going out. But the other part of that is an increase for the work that is done by the person in the office that's once a week, and she hasn't had an increase for, I understand, five years. So that's a pretty healthy increase of about 16% for her. And that's where that throws that into a pretty big increase on page 19.
Any other comments or questions? You ready for the...
Answer the rest of the question.
Oh, sorry, we didn't answer the whole question, sorry.
So we're two years out from our next townwide appraisal. It's been over 10 years, I believe, and... '06, thank you, Charlie. And we've also been encouraged, and I'm using that word lightly, by the state to digitize our maps. So we're hiring a firm to help us do that. There's some benefits to that. They make the records more accessible. Town of Warren did it a long time ago. I use it in my business. It's really nice not to have to drive to the town offices, although it's nice to see the town staff in Warren. I miss that. But we access the stuff online, and it's really helpful. So being compelled by the state to do that, having to spend that money, and we vetted the companies, had them come and present to us on that decision. And we will send out an RFP in the next year or so to a subcontractor that will do the reappraisal and will accept that contract. And then it takes about a year for them to get around to executing that contract. So it's quite a process. And Mary Jane's extra hours are intended to get us prepped for that process as well.
Any other comments or questions before we put the amended article to a vote?
I would suggest that anybody here, if they're on their lister card, just check what their house is or assessed at at least once a year.
So the suggestion was folks should check their assessment every year to see if it seems right to them. So, okay, we'll put this to a vote. The item before the assembly is Article III, as amended, reads, "Shall the voters approve a budget of $1,971,058 to pay the operating expenses and indebtedness of the town? If approved, an estimated $1,616,725 will be raised from property taxes." All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? The ayes have it. So we'll move on to Article IV. "Shall the voters authorize the town to collect taxes on real estate by four equal payments made to the treasurer as follows: One quarter, 25% of taxes to be paid without discount, not later than Monday, September 16, 2019; The second quarter, 25% of taxes to be paid without discount, not later than Friday, November 15, 2019; The third quarter, 25% of taxes to be paid without discount, not later than Monday, February 17, 2020; With the remaining quarter, 25% to be paid without discount, not later than Friday, May 15, 2020." Is there a motion on that item?
Don't move.
Beth Phillips moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. So unless there's any objection, I'm not gonna read the whole thing again, but I will open up Article IV for discussion. Are there any questions or comments? Nope? Okay, seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. Article IV reads, "Shall the voters authorize the town to collect taxes on real estate by four equal payments made to the treasurer as follows: One quarter of taxes to be paid without discount, not later than Monday, September 16, 2019; The second quarter of taxes to be paid without discount, not later than Friday, November 15, 2019; The third quarter of taxes to be paid without discount, not later than Monday, February 17, 2020; With the remaining quarter to be paid without discount, not later than Friday, May 15, 2020." All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? The ayes have it. Move on to Article V. "Shall the voters renew and extend for a maximum period of three years, ending March 31, 2022, the agricultural tax stabilization agreement for farmlands to the extent allowed by state law?" And there is a notation here, "This is not part of the article, but the program was first adopted by voters in 1986 and has been placed before voters for renewal or extension every three years since." Is there a motion on this?
I'll move it.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded by Charlie Goodman. So Article V, "Shall the voters renew and extend for a maximum period of three years, ending March 31, 2022, the agricultural tax stabilization agreement for farmlands to the extent allowed by state law?" Are there any comments or questions? Charlie Goodman.
Is there anyone involved in that?
Who'd like to take that? Yep? Paul Hartshorn.
Yes, we have two properties that are involved in that. It's Bodine Richard's Laura Trust is one, and the Ketchum Estate is the other one. That's two.
Any other comments or questions? Beth Phillips.
What does it do?
Paul, do you wanna take that? John Jamison.
Well, I have a grand list value on each of these properties. I have a stabilization amount, which I'm not sure how that's arrived at, and then a reduction in taxes of $600, approximately $588 on one of the properties and $455 on the other, to be exact. So it's a minor reduction in taxes for a property that is being actively used in an agricultural sense, is my read on that. Is that close?
Any other comments or questions? Nope? Seeing no, we'll put it to a vote. Article V, "Shall the voters renew and extend for a maximum period of three years, ending March 31, 2022, the agricultural tax stabilization agreement for farmlands to the extent allowed by state law?" All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? The ayes have it. So Article VII, I was told is, was advised by the town attorney to be on the warning, although it is an Australian ballot item. Is that correct? We're not gonna vote on it. So Article VII reads, "Shall voters elect one Harwood Unified Union School District..." Oh, what, Article VI? Yeah, we need to borrow money. Sorry. I got ahead of myself. Sorry about that. Article VI, "Shall voters authorize the select board to borrow money when needed to meet current expenses and indebtedness of the town of Waitsfield?" Is there a motion on that? It's moved and seconded. Did you catch that, Jennifer? Ted LaScaris moved it. Charlie Goodman seconded it. The article VI, "Shall voters authorize the select board to borrow money when needed to meet current expenses and indebtedness of the town of Waitsfield?" Any comments or questions? Nope? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. Article VI, "Shall the voters authorize the select board to borrow money when needed to meet current expenses and indebtedness of the town of Waitsfield?" All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? The ayes have it. So again, Article VII, "Shall the voters elect one Harwood Union School District Director for a term of three years, beginning March 2019?" And I just wanna clarify that because of the consolidation, the select board was advised to put this on the warning, but we're not taking action from the floor today? Okay, so this is not an item that we're gonna be voting on. It is part of your Australian ballot voting. And then finally, Article VIII, "To transact any other business that may legally come before town meeting." And we can't vote on any appropriation of money that hasn't been warned, but this is an opportunity for folks to ask additional questions of the select board, make statements regarding town governance. Does anybody have anything to bring before the town's other business? Liz LaFerrier.
This is a request for... Trevor, could you, next time you do your computer presentation, enlarge it?
We will endeavor to improve our technological aptitude. Thank you.
Anybody else have any other business? Michael Sharkey.
You told me, I didn't know when to get up, so is this the proper time to talk about the sidewalk?
Sure.
Okay, I have two things to talk about. First, I wanna talk about skiing. I just wanna say that we have two young people in our town that just came back from the world championships. That's against the best skis in the world, and both of them have done very well. And I think we, you know, since skiing is such important to us and to our economy, talk about it. Ben Ritchie got a silver medal in the world championship slum, which is unbelievable. That's against, you know, the Austrians, the Swiss, the Norwegians, everyone in the world. And Jimmy Krupa, I think, got a sixth in the same event. So right now, the men's ski team is suffering. We have one woman that's doing terrific, but really, we have no outstanding men. But Waitsfield may be on the map with our young skiers. So I think that's something we should have mentioned. The other thing I wanted to talk about is this sidewalk situation. We always spent, up until 2013, $5,000 to plow the sidewalk. Now, the sidewalk was not cement at that time, but it was a sidewalk. We then, in 2013, went up to $8,000. And 2014, we went up to $20,500. And in 2019, we're at $28,500. That's $14,250 per mile. Now, I do not know... I think the roads have done very well here, and I do not know what it costs us per mile to plow the road. But I do know that DuBois and King made a study in 2016 for the State of Vermont Transpiration Department, and the average cost of plowing a road, and we're probably in that ballpark, in the towns in Vermont, is $6,400 up to $8,000 a mile per season. We're spending $14,250 each mile. We only have two miles of sidewalks, so it's $28,000. I don't understand why it has to be... I don't understand why it has to be that expensive.
Would anybody like to speak to that? Paul Hartshorn?
We put the maintenance, winter maintenance of the sidewalks out to bid. That's what the bids come in at. If we don't accept a bid, I don't know if anybody's gonna shovel that all the way. And the man that's taking care of it now, we're getting complaints that he isn't even doing enough. And he's out there almost every day with just a dust in it, sanding or salting or plowing or something on that sidewalk. So if there's anybody that wants to come in with a bid with a whole lot less, I'd like to see it.
And Mike, I think we have to acknowledge that we were being undercharged by Mr. Goodman when he was doing it. I really do. And just to answer your question, in fiscal year '20, the budget includes an estimated $9,067 per mile in winter maintenance for the town.
For the highways?
For the highways, yes.
Oh, well, now, the next consider... We're talking about, you need another man. What is the bookkeeping come out to per mile to plow the sidewalk if we bought our own equipment and we hired another man, that we have a lot of work for him anyway?
John, you wanna take that?
I would defer to Trevor because I think we've done that math on the back of a napkin, haven't we, Trevor?
Right, and the discussion about the fourth road crew member is really about how would you deploy them in the current work footprint, really. It wouldn't be about taking on something extra such as the sidewalks, because when they're in the sidewalk plow is exactly when you could use them in a regular plow truck as part of that regular plow route. And so the cost to add a person, once you factor in all the benefits and you take a conservative estimate, it was $75,000 to $80,000 just to add the extra person. And now you've gotta purchase whatever the equipment would need to be to maintain the sidewalk. And as you start to extrapolate that out, it can get more expensive, certainly than the $28,500. Buys us the operator, the materials, the equipment. You know, they insure it, they repair it, and it's the final year of our five-year deal, is fiscal '20 as well.
Anyone else have any other business to bring before the town? Ren?
Well, since we're talking about it, just really briefly, I'm a lifelong village resident, Waitsfield Village. I opposed the sidewalk project at first, but now I've really seen how it serves our community, and I see families using it and people with disabilities using it, and I really am glad that we have it. However, my goodness, I hear that plow go back and forth, rumbling through so often. So I just, for the select board, just to note, not necessarily take any action on, maybe take a good, close look at how much he does and whether that's a little bit too much, perhaps. And my brother across the street has, sends me texts whenever he's up visiting, too, like, again? Are you kidding? So for the record, thank you.
Any other? Charlie Goodman.
Sorry, I retired after 27 years.
Sorry, I retired after 27 years. I would comment, though, I thought our sidewalk service has improved greatly since the recent contract was awarded to the Kingsbury Companies. I felt that they've really done a bang-up job this year. Though I would like to make a comment on our new addition to the sidewalk. You know, we're planning the west side of our walkway to be reconstructed and put into a concrete deck and there's been considerable conversations about these bump outs that would create a path to, to crosswalks. And I've, I've noticed in towns, particularly St. Barry, where they do have those bump outs and what it's created for problems in the winter maintenance. And then it also takes away, of course, from, from on-street parking, which, as you know, we are desperate for in this town. So I would like to ask the board to carefully consider, as they move into this project, about those bump outs and which that cost is to us. That's not going to be in the grant, if I believe I have that correct. So I would just like to ask them to carefully consider these bump outs as they go through, forward with the project. Thank you.
Charlie? Are there any other, any other business to bring before the town? Yes?
Wasn't the PTA going to cover the cost to the town for the bump outs? So there is no cost to the town?
So, so the, the comment was that the PTA was going to cover the cost of the bump outs for the crosswalks? Any other business?
I just wanted to update the town, in case they didn't know, that Laura Graves, our local equestrian, has now made number two in the world rankings as of the end of February. And she is also going to be one of the members of the team at the World Cup in Sweden. I don't know if she's been recognized publicly at a town meeting before, but I wanted to recognize her.
Any other business? Seeing no, we're going to be getting out pretty early, but I want to remind folks that there still is lunch down at the church. It's the best deal in town, once a year. That's at noon?
Eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty. Great. So seeing no other business coming before the town, under Article VIII, I would accept a motion to adjourn town meeting effective at the closing of the polls at seven o'clock tonight? It's moved by Sal, is there a second? It's been seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The ayes have it. Thank you, everybody.